Number fifty-six will now come to order. Would you please stand for the playing of the national anthem? Press for Tim, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Andre Chapman of Oakley Full Baptist, uh, Oakley Full Gospel Baptist Church to pray with us. Welcome to council, sir.
Lord God, before we do anything, we come to say thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being a loving God, a forgiving God, a God that is so grand that, that can see the big picture, but caring enough to meet us right where we are. We ask that you meet us here in this time and in this hour, as we strive for restoration, as we strive to encourage one another and be on one mind, with a prayer of living in peace, with a prayer for better days ahead. Help us be open to conversation, open to love, open to peace, the peace that's a past us all understanding. In the words of David, isn't it great when God's people live together in unity? Remind us that you will never leave us nor forsake us, and let the peace of Christ rule in our hearts, for everything is possible with you and nothing is possible without you. You get all the glory and all the praise. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three seventeen point twelve. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three eleven point twenty-one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none. The journal is approved. This, this week's communication received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read to the record?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we'll go around the dia starting with Councilmember Bankston.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Just one announcement this evening regarding the application for the ground floor growth initiative. Uh, it has been extended to Thursday, November thirtieth at eleven fifty-nine P. M. Uh, really excited about this initiative. We've been getting a lot of, uh, great interest from businesses, but we want to make sure we give folks ample amount of time to be able to apply. The link to the application can be found on the city's small biz hub. That's C bus, small, B I Z hub dot com, and has also been shared on my social media pages as well as other council pages. If you have any issues accessing the link or just have, uh, questions about the application in the program, feel free to reach out to my office, uh, to JP Dorval, my legislative aide, at JP Dorval, D O R V A L, at columbus.gov. Uh, please keep a close eye also on our social media pages for future updates around, uh, the program. Again, want to, uh, reiterate to small businesses that this is a two-part application. The first part is very simple and straightforward, so if you are interested, please go onto the small biz hub and apply. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Burrosa De Padilla.
Nothing for me this evening, Council President.
Councilmember Brown. Council, President Pro Tem. Councilmember Faber. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just want to, um, take a moment to acknowledge that today is my legislative aide's last day. Uh, Lucy Frank, and we've been celebrating her time, uh, with me the entire time that I've been in office, and so, super excited for her next journey as she becomes the very first Chief of Staff for Toledo City Council. She has served not only, um, my office, but this council in this city so admirably and, and with, um, I've just watched her grow from a young woman into a, a great leader. And so, it's a big loss for the city of Columbus and for this council, certainly my staff, but we, uh, are wishing her the utmost of her, of success. And, uh, I keep joking with her that she's now got twelve bosses instead of one, but, um, I'm sure if anybody can manage that, it'll be Lucy Frank. So, um, just want to, um, acknowledge her contributions to our city, to my staff, my, the council team and, and all of the rest of them. So, wish you luck, Lucy Frank, and, uh, look forward to seeing what you do in the great city of Toledo. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember, and we all join in wishing, um, as I call her chief now, uh, Chief Frank, a, um, exciting, uh, next phase of her career. We've been grateful for contributions that she has added to the city, Columbus City Council team, and, uh, we've been grateful for her service. Just a few announcements. First, we want to extend a warm, um, wishes to everyone in our community who is celebrating Wally, uh, the celebration of light. Uh, we look forward to city council, uh, having a celebration this week, um, but certainly want to extend, um, to all who are celebrating. We also, uh, will be having a joint hearing, uh, come, uh, on the twenty-twenty-three housing initiatives that will take place here in council chambers next Monday at two P. M. alongside, uh, President Pro Tem, uh, Dorance and Housing Chair Faber. I'm looking forward to sharing updates on the work of our team and the administration. Uh, and then last Thursday, the mayor released his twenty-twenty-four operating budget proposal. Uh, council members and staff are beginning to dive into that proposal, and we will, um, have dates, uh, set aside soon for, uh, upcoming hearings that we encourage all folks to participate in, uh, as we seek public input as council looks, uh, at how we will engage, um, uh, and support that, that budget. And then, then finally, I, I want to, one, just welcome, um, our guests, uh, who are in council chambers again this evening. I know, uh, council members have, um, um, started to, to build relationships with folks here and have been in meetings over the last couple of weeks. For this evening, uh, well, one, it's important to say that, uh, in this room in particular, this is the people's house, the people's living room. This is where conversations happen. Um, everybody's voices are, are to be heard, um, and everybody's voices are to be respected. That is in the United States, but certainly in the city of Columbus and most specifically in this room. And so, um, as long as I'm here, we will always create space, uh, to have the discussion. That being said, we're going to run a regular meeting tonight, and our job is to do the people's business and also make sure that not only your voices are heard, but the voices of, um, the rest of the community who are depending on council to run the meeting. So, tonight actually is a short meeting, fingers crossed, uh, where we will, uh, get done probably in about forty-five minutes. That is when, uh, we want to have the space to, um, have, uh, community dialogue. Uh, we have a six-thirty zoning hearing, uh, zoning meeting that is in the books that we have to have at six-thirty. So, if we are not completed in having those conversations then, after the zoning, we will pick right back up. We will, uh, be here for the entire conversation. We won't, won't leave. Um, but that is the process that we have to get through, regular business, then we'll open it up for conversation. If that happens before six-thirty or if it goes past six-thirty, we will need to pause to go back into zoning meeting, uh, to get that out the way, and then we would come back to, um, um, our important conversations at hand. But just wanted to, to lay that out, uh, on the front end. Um, are there any comments or, uh, by our lucky officials, city attorney, auditor, treasurer's office? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we have a motion to waive reading of title of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance number of thirty-day legislation?
Economic Development Committee Ordinance Thirty-Fifty-four dash twenty-twenty-three, Technology Committee Ordinance Thirty-Twenty-six dash twenty-twenty-three, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Nine Twenty-Six, Thirty-Nineteen dash twenty-twenty-three, Veterans Senior and Disability Affairs Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Nine Forty-four and Twenty-Nine Forty-five dash twenty-twenty-three, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance Thirty-Fifty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Seven Fifty-Nine, Twenty-Seven Ninety-nine, Twenty-Nine Forty-two, Twenty-Nine Fifty-five dash twenty-twenty-three, Housing Committee Ordinance Thirty-Zero-One dash twenty-twenty-three and Thirty-Zero-Two dash twenty-twenty-three, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance Twenty-Nine Forty-three dash twenty-twenty-three, Environment Committee Ordinance Twenty-Nine Ninety-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Finance Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Eight Ninety-three and Thirty-Eighty-four dash twenty-twenty-three, Rules and Reference Committee Ordinance is Thirty-One Thirty-One, Thirty-One Forty-One, Thirty-One Forty-two dash twenty-twenty-three, Zoning Committee Ordinance is Three-Zero-Zero-Six, Thirty-One Twenty-Five, Thirty-One Twenty-Six, Thir-Three, Thirty-Zero-Seven, Thirty-One Twenty-four and Thirty-One Forty dash twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I don't have my speaker slip. Do we have any speakers on press reading? All right. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Economic Development Committee Ordinance Thirty-Sixty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three, Technology Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Nine Twenty, Twenty-Nine Thirty-two, Twenty-Nine Thirty-nine, Thirty-Zero-Five, Thirty-Twenty-seven, Thirty-Forty-one, Thirty-Forty-four, Thirty-Sixty-six dash twenty-twenty-three, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution Two-Thirteen-X dash twenty-twenty-three, Ordinance is Twenty-Seven Zero-Six, Twenty-Eight Thirty-four, Twenty-Eight Sixty, Twenty-Nine Eighty, Twenty-Nine Eighty-three, Thirty- Seventy, Thirty-Ninety-six, Thirty-One-O-eight, Thirty-One-O-nine, Thirty-One Ten dash twenty-twenty-three, Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee Ordinance Thirty-Seventeen dash twenty-twenty-three, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is Twenty-One Ninety-nine, Twenty-Eight Fifty-five, Twenty-Eight Fifty-six, Twenty-Eight Sixty-four, Twenty-Nine Thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three, Housing Committee Ordinance Thirty-Sixty-nine dash twenty-twenty-three, Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Eight Thirty-nine, Twenty-Eight Ninety-eight, Thirty-Twenty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Eight Forty-two and Thirty-Twenty-five dash twenty-twenty-three, Public Safety Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Seven Sixty-five, Twenty-Eight Fifty-two, Twenty-Nine Ninety-two, Twenty-Nine Ninety-six dash twenty-twenty-three, Administration Committee Ordinance Twenty-Nine Eighty-two and Thirty-Eighty-eight dash twenty-twenty-three, Finance Committee Ordinance is Twenty-Three Eighty-four, Twenty-Nine Eighteen, Twenty-Nine Sixty-three dash twenty-twenty-three, and Appointments from the Mayor's Office Numbered A zero one eighty-one and A zero one eighty-two dash twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one, uh, speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Nate Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
Let's thank George Wilkins, sixteen-twelve, earlier than ever. Um, speaking for this, uh, Thirty-Sixty-Ninety thousand and twenty-three, um, I believe it's the, uh, Tony Wells Foundation. I would just like to see this as more money of just six-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars, also to, uh, set aside for American Dream and Down payment for the elderly, for the multi-disability people that's, that's hearing impaired up to, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars to send aside. So, again, I'm all for this, but to be for more money of six-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars and set aside, uh, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred some odd dollars for those people that's multi-disability, elderly folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, and, and that is on ordinance Thirty-Sixty-nine dash twenty-three, in which, uh, Mr. Wilkins is speaking in favor of. Um, are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve these items as designated as consent? Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
The consent portion of our agenda has passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day postponed emergency legislation. First committee to come before council is Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilmember Banks and Councilmember Flora Joris.
Thank you, uh, Council President. Tonight in the Economic Development Committee for second reading, we have ordinance Twenty-Nine Thirty-One dash twenty-twenty-three to authorize the Director of Department of Development to enter into a contract in an amount up to fifteen thousand dollars of designing local LTD for the purpose of pursuing private grant funding for public art to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes to authorize expenditure beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, to authorize the expenditure of up to fifteen thousand dollars to repeal ordinance thirteen thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three. Uh, this ordinance, uh, simply corrects an administrative error that was made in relation to ordinance thirteen thirty-seven dash twenty-twenty-three, which passed on, on June ninth of this year. The contract modification that ordinance thirteen thirty-seven dash twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three puts into place was not executed prior to the expiration of the contract. This ordinance corrects that error by repealing, uh, the previous contract and establishing a new contract. Is there any questions, uh, from my colleagues or, or concerns? Uh, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, uh, Council President. May I move to the Small and Minority Business Committee?
Please.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, Small Minority Business Committee for second reading, we have ordinance Twenty-Nine Seventy-seven dash twenty-twenty-three to authorize the Director of Development to encumber funds for multiple contracts totaling amount up to nine-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars with to-be-determined firms for implementation of the Accelerate Columbus Program targeting small businesses, and to authorize the expenditure of up to nine-hundred-twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Uh, in twenty-nineteen, the city of Columbus launched Accelerate Columbus Small Businesses as a part of the branded set of small business training, technical assistance, mentoring, and advisement programs targeting aspiring entrepreneurs and existing small business owners. Initially offered as just a pilot, the goal of the program was to provide structured as well as on-demand training, one-on-one advisements, and technical assistance to both aspiring and existing entrepreneurs and small businesses. Given the success of the program in its pilot year, last year, council approved six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar appropriation to run year two of the program, where seven entrepreneur support organizations facilitated various activities in direct relation to the needs of each small business that applied. Uh, I am really excited about, uh, this particular program because we've seen tremendous success and a tremendous reach in the amount of businesses that we have been able to serve. And so, doubling down on this effort gives us an opportunity to expand that reach and to serve more businesses. Uh, I would like to, uh, hand the floor over to Deputy Director Quentin Harris, uh, with our Department of Development, whose team has been really spearheading this, just to give us a little bit more information on where we are to date and what this new legislation will do.
Thank you, Councilmember Bankston, President Harden, members of council. Accelerate Columbus was meant to support existing, this, the existing business ecosystem with programming that may not easily be offered, uh, through existing organizations. Heading into our third year, we excited to be funding approximately ten businesses, um, that are not-for-profit and for-profit small businesses that will be providing niche programming to the community. Uh, for example, businesses that are helping, um, daycare providers, um, with their accreditation that will ultimately allow them to access, uh, more funding from, uh, state-level organizations that will allow them to expand, uh, but more importantly, sustain their businesses, um, that will allow our residents to access daycare opportunities so that they can stay gainfully employed or, um, acquire new employment opportunities. Um, another example of a organization that will be assisting are, is a small business organizations that will work with businesses here in the city, uh, that will assist them in, um, gaining access to big-box retailers like Target or Krogers or Walmart, uh, to sell their goods, um, in those big-box retailers all across, uh, the United States. So, um, the department specifically wants to highlight, um, the support that we've received from the mayor's office and from Columbus City Council, uh, as we have received increased funding year over year for our Accelerate Columbus Initiative, which has allowed the Department of Development to, uh, increase the number of organizations that we have been able to fund over the last three years. This ultimately has resulted in our ability, uh, to support a larger number of businesses throughout the entire city of Columbus. So, we are very excited about this opportunity. We are excited about, um, the work that we'll be partnering with the small business organizations during the year of twenty-twenty-four, uh, and really looking to help propel our small business p- community to do more and more, uh, each and every year.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Director, and specifically to your, our small business team, um, who's doing such great work. You know, we're currently in, uh, the first cohort of Accelerate Columbus, and we have been able to serve three hundred businesses so far, uh, in anticipation with this funding, anticipate to serve eight hundred businesses. So, this funding, one, directly goes back to support small minority businesses that are helping other small minority businesses, so directly and indirectly making an impact in our small business ecosystem. So, really excited to see the outcomes of this program. And again, this is us being intentional, um, about how do we double down and invest in our small businesses who are truly the lifeblood of our community. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. Now, may I move to the Technology Committee?
Please.
Uh, thank you. Tonight in technology, uh, for second reading, we have ordinance Twenty-Nine Sixty-two dash twenty-twenty-three to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to modify and increase an existing contract with Vertiv Corporation for Maintenance and Related Services on the city's uninterrupted power supply, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to modify and increase an existing contract with Vertiv Corporation for HVAC Maintenance and Repairs, to waive the relevant sections of Columbus City Codes, Chapter three twenty-nine relating to competitive bidding, and to authorize the expenditure of sixty-eight thousand ninety-three dollars and six cents from the Information Services Operating Fund. Uh, Vertiv Corporation is the vendor that can, that currently conducts maintenance and services on the city's uninterrupted power supply and HVAC systems for our data centers. The uninterrupted power supply protects our data centers from potential power outages, and the HVAC systems ensure that the data center equipment remains at the necessary temperature for optimal operation. Based off of past experience, it is in the city's best interest to have one vendor handle the maintenance of our data center, uninterrupted power supply, and HVAC systems. The department has requested a waiver of competitive bidding, um, since the current vendor is familiar with DOT's uninterrupted power supply and HVAC systems and is currently in contract with them, uh, and does not, uh, and the organization also does not utilize a third-party provider for billing. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bankston, Burrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. It's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming for council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilmember Burrosa De Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. Um, and I do have some speakers, so I will have, invite them to come down to the podium. Um, we wanted to, before I present this, uh, piece of legislation, I realize that this is, I'd like to say that I'm on their team. This is our, uh, members of our public service team, and, uh, we usually thank our snow warriors after the season has been completed, after they've put in long hours, after they've spent holidays, not with their families, but at some of our outposts and on our streets, uh, keeping them nice and clear. And so, I wanted to do a pre-thank you. I promise I give a post-thank you, but provide a pre-thank you, and then also just a glimpse into what our, um, I know it's unbelievable to talk about this now with the beautiful sunshiny day that we had today, but if the trick-or-treat night, uh, told us anything about predictable Ohio weather, um, I thought that it was important for us to just take a pause and talk a little bit about, um, our snow plan, uh, for the city. So, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Scott Torville and, um, and also some other great folks, Leo and, um, Julie from our Public Service Department to talk a little bit about that plan, so.
Well, good evening, President Harden, Chair Burrosa De Padilla, members of council. Thank you so much for having us, uh, tonight. We would just like to share with you that we are absolutely ready for the upcoming snow season. Um, thanks to great work by members of our team, particularly Mr. Ross, um, our staffing and equipment levels are at all-time highs. Julie has also done a fantastic job curating a, um, fantastic culture at our outpost to ensure that our staff members are now actively recruiting their friends and peers to come work for street maintenance because it's, because it is such a good place to work. Um, with that, we have also spent countless hours this summer meeting with all of the neighboring communities that border or interact with Columbus to ensure that we have fantastic partnerships with those communities in order to properly serve the central Ohio region at large. How can we work with them to be more efficient? Uh, finally, our auxiliary staff program, as you may be familiar with, that takes non-CDL licensed, uh, Columbus City staff members and puts them in, uh, pick-up trucks that do not require a commercial driver's license. That program was so successful last year, it has grown this year. We have completed all of our training. Um, our equipment is ready, and, uh, potentially with the action, uh, before you tonight, we thank you in advance for your support. We'll be bringing, uh, private contractors into the fold as part of the snow team as well, in order to provide the best possible service to the Columbus community. With that, I'd welcome any questions.
Yes, well, and also I would love for Leo and, um, Julie to introduce themselves as well.
Good evening, Council President Harden, council members. I'm Leo Ross. I'm the Street Maintenance Manager for Infrastructure. My main function in life is to take care of equipment, make sure parts are readily available. I work directly for Fleet, and I also am in charge of the CDL Driver Licensing Program that we have this year, and for training for all our employees for snow and ice.
Hello, President Harden, council members. My name's Julie Curry, and I'm an Assistant Manager at North Outpost. Um, we're going to have a lot of auxiliary drivers this year, and I hope to, uh, be able to clear the snow. We have a very big area where we're at, and, uh, making sure everybody's there on time and good attitude and work hard.
I can also very confidently say there's a rodeo where folks get the opportunity, uh, mainly it's folks who work in public service. I know Councilmember Faber, I think Council President Shannon Harden had the opportunity to do this, to drive one of our plows. I've driven both a small and a large one, and offered my auxiliary services, and I was declined, so I'm just going to say, um, but you do have Julie, who is an expert driver, and those plows are no joke, so, um, Director, is there anything else that you would like to add?
I just want to add that, um, you know, for us, snow and ice isn't just something we do in the winter. It really is a year-round commitment for us, and, and this year, we really did spend a lot of time working with those jurisdictions around us who have been great partners, um, to trade off either mileage for mileage if it makes sense, so we're not driving through somebody to get to something else or vice versa. Sometimes it's trading miles for, um, salt or other materials that we make that they don't have the ability to make themselves. Um, so I think this year, people are going to see, uh, even more efficiency from our team than they have in the past, and that's really our goal, is to every year just get better and better at what we do and, and pray that no snow comes. Thank you so much.
Um, I also saw the Council President was shaking his head no, so if you want to get him out into a rodeo and get him behind one of those trucks, I'm sure he'd be excited to do that. Um, but I do want to, first of, well, do my colleagues have any questions or comments for our folks before we move to the legislation? I just, again, want to say, I, I have spent a lot of time with our folks in public service, and they really do help to make this, continue the city, to ensure that the city runs, right? Rain, sleet, snow, whatever it is that's happening through a pandemic, um, and they do miss time with their families, and some, they're some of the hardest-working folks in the city. And so, I do sincerely want to start off with a thank you for whatever this season may hold for all of us. Um, thank you for, for all the work and the intention that you put into your work and for helping to keep our city's streets, um, safe for all of our residents. I also want to, um, let folks know that there is, if you ever have a question around, did my street get plowed, when's it going to get plowed, you can see live on the map. And Scott, do you know the website offhand? Because I thought I had it in my notes, and I don't.
Don't know the exact website, but it's under the Columbus Warrior Watch Program. I think a quick Google search should be able to help you find that.
Absolutely. Um, and then you can see live what, what streets have been plowed or not, and you can see the time in which that has happened. So, again- So, again, I want to just thank you and thank you for all the work that you do and just wanted to give our snow plow, our snow warriors a round of applause before the season starts. Thanks y'all for coming out. And then with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce our next piece of, our only piece of legislation tonight in public service, and that is ordinance 2869-2023 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a service contract with Rocky Fork Company for the provision of snow removal and de-icing services this winter, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the Street Construction, Maintenance, and Repair Fund for that purpose and to declare an emergency. Again, this is in addition to our snow warriors that we heard from earlier this evening. The Department of Public Service issued requests to local businesses for on-call snow and ice removal assistance. The ordinance allows Rocky Fork Company to have an additional 25 vehicles and personnel experienced in plowing and de-icing during severe snowfall. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, and that's all from me this evening, Council President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee coming for counsel is Public Utilities Committee, chaired by Press Pro Tim.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Tonight, first in the Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance 2906-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification for the professional service contract with EMA Inc. for the Advanced Metering System Project and authorize an expenditure up to $1,200,000 from the Water Bond Fund for this contract modification. And advanced metering system is favorable for the Department of Public Utilities Operations and Customer Service Functions as it's replacing older water and electrical meters with improved service, decrease, it'll decrease burden on maintenance operations, reduce water loss, and improve revenue. This will also move us from quarterly to monthly billing, which have a positive impact on customers as bills will be more manageable for both cost and time. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2933-2023 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction modification with J-Track LLC for software platform and track management metrics for Green Spot Program, to authorize expenditure of $20,000, split among the electricity, water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater operating funds and waive competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Codes. J-Track provides Green Spot Program with technology and engagement tools to empower residents and businesses to track the effect of their sustainability efforts. Due to the expected costs of implementing a new software platform that matched J-Track's specialized offerings, it's in the best interests of the city to waive provisions of competitive bidding and enter into a contract modification with J-Track Inc. for Green Spot Metrics Software Platform. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance 3030-2023 to authorize Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of materials and supplies for the Division of Water Distribution Maintenance Section to authorize expenditure of up to $500,000 from the Water Operating Fund, to authorize City Auditor to transfer $3,200,000 between object classes within the Water Operating Fund to allow for the purchase of critical supplies and materials and declare emergency. The supplies purchased from these contracts will be used to replenish materials used for daily operations for water line projects. The ordinance is being submitted as emergency in order to align budget authority with projected expenditures and provide for timely purchase of critical supplies and materials. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all I have until the zoning committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming for counsel is the Public Safety Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have one in the Public Safety Committee this evening. It's ordinance 2874-2023 to authorize and direct the Director of Department of Finance and Management to enter into contract with Samiri LLC for the purchase of Toledo KA 301 forensic workstations for the Division of Police Digital Forensic Unit to waive competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes to authorize the expenditure of $59,072 from the Law Enforcement Contraband Seizure Fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police is requesting a bid waiver according to Code 329.27 to enter into contract with Samiri LLC because of its compatibility with other Samiri Toledo project, products that the Division uses. Other digital forensics purchased by the Division of Police have been less reliable than the equipment from Samiri. Samiri warranty, support, reliability, and accountability is significantly better than other equipment previously used by the forensic unit. Director, do you have anything to add? Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all I have in public safety. With your permission, I'll move to environment.
Yep.
Next, I have ordinance 3093-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Public Service to enter into a grant agreement with Elevate Northland to support the Cleaner Columbus Youth Grant Program, to authorize an appropriation expenditure within the jobs growth sub-fund and declare an emergency. Real excited about this piece of legislation, a continuation of the program, programming we have done in the past with our youth groups within Columbus, Ohio, allows groups to go out and pick up litter in specified areas through Keep Columbus Beautiful. They go out and then they can get a $500 award to their nonprofit. So, just a good opportunity to clean up our community and also make a little money for their organization at the same time. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
And then, next I have, that's all I have in environment, if, with your permission, move on to administration.
Please.
In administration, I have ordinance 2928-2023 to authorize the Director of Department of Human Resources to enter into a five-year subscription contract consisting of one initial year and four one-year renewals with Salary.com LLC for the purpose of providing a market data tool for the city's compensation office, to authorize the expenditure of $16,000 from the general fund to waive the competitive bidding requirements of Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. To acquire a subscription service for a salary survey tool in the most timely manner, it was critical for the city and the compensation management team to perform due diligence. The internal team identified several potential providers known to the compensation professional community. Market data industry leaders were contacted to gain knowledge of their products and pricing options. Presentations were given and each bidder followed up with question and answer meetings and any additional requested information. Director, could you provide any additional, is there anything else you'd like to add about the waiver of competitive bidding?
Not really. I do want to thank you for your consideration here and understanding that we do have a contract right now with Baker Tilly and we are working on a total rewards and compensation study, and so the timeliness of this is critical. And so, I appreciate the opportunity to, to move forward with this, with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Pass.
And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final committee coming for counsel is the Finance Committee. I chair that committee. We have one ordinance 3097-2023 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to provide for the transfer of $21,655,333 within the general fund, to transfer $3,63,237 in appropriations between objects and certain non-general fund department and divisions, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a fund, is a fund that transfers between departments that allow the city to operate through the end of 2023. This is a standard accounting ordinance that happens in the third quarter of the year as the city prepares to balance its books at the end of each calendar year. Do any of my colleagues have any question or comments on this ordinance? Here or none, I move for passage. There's second, clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
Right. This concludes the finance portion of the agenda. Seeing no further business, we come for counsel. I move for adjournment. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Favor, Remy President Harden.
A meeting is adjourned.
And to that statement, I would say thank you so much. Thank you for listening to the calls of the people in this room. Thank you for listening to your constituents. But to that vein, I would encourage the rest of the members of this council to sign on to that statement. I would encourage you to sign on to that statement because signing on to a ceasefire, though I understand the limitations of all bodies, though I understand the limitations of city council, I would encourage you to recognize that that limitation is not one that is concerning to everybody in this room right now. That point of signing on to a ceasefire, symbolic or otherwise, the point of doing something like that is to ensure that we have a unified voice across this country. And that unified voice across this country, current polls say nearly 7% of Americans support a ceasefire. Columbus City Council has an opportunity to join the ranks of 70% of Americans. That is the most continuously popular vote at this point in time. That is one of the most popular things that you can stand for. There's no... There's nothing taboo. There's nothing controversial. There's nothing, nothing controversial about stopping the raining of bombs on top of children. There's nothing controversial about that. I don't have a lot to say. There are many people here who are, you know, very skilled orators and will say, I'm sure, something along these lines, but I'm urging you as your constituent and as members of the city council where two members of your city council have been brave and have been willing to say what needs to be said, I urge you as the rest of this committee to, or the rest of this council to sign on to that statement. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just wanted to make a check and see if there are any questions or comments for Ms. Jenna. Thank you.
My name is Yasmeen. I'm an organizer with the Palestinian Liberation Movement. But you all know this, I stood here before you exactly four weeks ago today where we were given false hope while an additional thousands of people, most of whom children, were brutally murdered, kidnapped, and bombed at the hands of the Israeli occupation forces. And still, many council members have remained silent as ever. I would like to acknowledge and thank council members Padia and Councilwoman Favor for signing on to a statement calling for ceasefire, but I echo Jenna's point urging the rest of the members to sign on to the statement as well. We came here pleading nothing that should be out of the question, only transparency from our public servants on the nature of their paid trips to an ethno-nationalist state whose existence relies on the killing and displacement of the Palestinian people. We received nothing of the sort. Council President Harden, we were told by you that your political consultant, Joe Rataf, would face consequences for his comment on Twitter regarding finishing off Palestinians. I am here today looking for a response. Your website says that you approach things with the attitude that if it's not for all, it's not for us. I would hope you hold your colleagues to the same standards, and I would hope that your definition of all includes Palestinians. Even at full capacity, this room could not hold the number of people who have been killed in the last week alone. There is no time to continue avoiding speaking on this for the sake of maintaining some standard of indifference. Indifference is not a virtue. Being indifferent to genocide, to the murder of thousands of people, to pain, to suffering, is not a virtue. The ability to witness ethnic cleansing and the murder of children without doing the complete minimum of lifting your tongue to call for a ceasefire, especially in a situation increasing in severity with every moment that passes, is not a virtue, could not be farther from that. The same way a court would hold accomplices accountable for murder, I am here holding you accountable for the murder of thousands, of tens of thousands of Palestinians. You have endorsed this murder with your money. You have endorsed this murder with your silence. You have endorsed this murder with your faux pity. You have endorsed this murder with your lavish trips to occupied territory. You have endorsed this murder with your working relationships with people who advocate for genocide, and you have endorsed this murder with your public indifference for your own political gain. Being local politicians does not make you exempt from the responsibility to speak on an ethnic cleansing, and we will continue to remind you of this. We demand, not ask, that you as servants of the public, of the constituents in this room, and of the Palestinian community, recognize genocide and call for a ceasefire now.
Sir, before you come up, I want to, I will respond to Yasmeen. I think that you had a very specific question to me regarding, you know, our political consultant, my political consultant that I have. What I said two weeks ago is still true. He did not speak for me. I thought he made light of a situation that was not at all, that there gave no room for that type of commentary. He does not work for me any longer, and he will not be working for me in the future.
Thank you for your response. I appreciate that.
Hello, council members. My name is Cheyenne Parsai. I am an immigration lawyer here locally. On Monday, October 16th, our community came here to these chambers to implore this council to acknowledge and call for an immediate end to the Israeli aggression on the people of Gaza. That Monday had been the ninth day of relentless bombing which had killed 2,778 Palestinians and injured 9,938. That was 28 days ago. The Palestinian death toll now stands at 11,240, over 4,630 of whom were children. On November 6th, the Secretary General of the UN, Antonio Guterres, called Gaza "a graveyard for children." In two airstrikes on the Jabalya Refugee Camp, Israel killed two Hamas commanders. They also killed 200 civilians. That is a ratio of 100 civilian deaths for a single Hamas militant. By that logic, to kill all 30,000 Hamas militants, as Israel wishes to do, Israel is prepared to also kill 3 million people. Gaza's population is, of course, 2.5 million people. Politicians and the media have been saying that the loss of life in war is tragic, and that we seem to have forgotten that that is simply an unavoidable result of war, that if Palestinians don't want to be killed and ethnically cleansed, maybe they should just accept the degradation of their colonizers and not resist in any way. Is this body comfortable with that logic? If so, would you be comfortable with the argument that if Israel doesn't want dead civilians, that it should simply not colonize the land of the indigenous Palestinians? The racist asymmetrical orientation towards the colonization and subjugation of an indigenous people immediately makes itself apparent in literally any and every single Zionist talking point gleefully accepted by the mass media and politicians paid by the Zionist lobby. This government, the United States government, has failed us. It has failed us on epic proportions. It has failed us for decades. It has killed over 2 million people, Muslims. The Operation Iraqi Freedom, does it seem like Iraq is free? Millions we have killed, exterminated. We have exterminated people. That is not freedom, and this is our time to make amends on this land. We took this land. This government took this land. The indigenous land of these people have been erased, and all that is left is Sayoda and this and that, their names barely. The natives of this land were not made by God to be statues and to be, I don't know, on top of the Washington Redskins or something. They're not, they're not cartoons for our consumption afterward. If we want to make amends as Americans, now is the time to say, no longer are we going to be okay with the idea of destroying indigenous people, indigenous culture, stealing their culture, stealing their culture, exterminating them, ethnically cleansing them, and taking pictures on the beach. Check out the new Gaza City Beach. Will this body go and see Gaza City Beach in five years' time? That would be the ultimate, I don't know how many other words we can use than failure. We need to grow up as a country. Everyone else is looking at us. And I commend the bodies, the councilwomen on this body that had the gall and the audacity and the strength to stand up and say, enough is enough, ceasefire now.
Salaam alaikum rahmatullah. I would like to start off by just acknowledging Doris and Favor your statements. Thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Hani, and I stand before you as a Palestinian, a voice from people who have endured 75 years of occupation, terror, and displacement at the hand of the settler colonial state of Israel. I've never known the feeling of belongingness, of being a part of a community, my community. For decades, my people have been subjected to humiliation, trauma, and death, all rooted in a bigoted Zionist ideology driven by political power and control. We've been forcibly expelled from our homeland, left to navigate foreign countries that continually remind us that we are outsiders. But let's shift focus. Council members, you're not blind to the realities that we're sharing. You've visited Israel, witnessed the narrative spun by the Israeli colonizing state. Yet, let's be clear, you've only seen the sanitized versions, the facade they carefully present, which notoriously indoctrinates the Western world into their fairy tale democracy land, only showing you their ethnically cleansed settlements that are free from Palestinians. Your annual free trips funded by the oppressors show a distorted reality. You've only experienced, sorry, you've only experienced the ever-so-familiar European and American-style settlements in Tel Aviv, while staying ignorant to the fact that a stone's throw away from your blind heart, you fail to bear witness to the segregated and oppressed Palestinian people living under the constant threat of this genocidal regime. So I pose the question, have you forsaken your humanity? Shannon, you are the president of this chamber, representing a marginalized group. I believe you have experienced the sharp edge of oppression yourself, and you have leveraged that background to rise into this political position that you are in right now. But has the pursuit of political gain diluted your humanity? Have you conveniently forgotten the struggles your own communities endured? Let's address the elephant in the room here. Has your political self-interest blinded you to the fact that the same settler state that you hesitate to condemn is directly involved in training the police officers responsible for the unjust killing of the black people in this country? Have you not educated yourself on what your freedom fighters who have fought for your rights, like the Black Panthers, Ethel Minor, or Malcolm X, who has actually visited the real side of Palestine back in 1964, unlike you, to which he, to which he saw the kinship between the struggles of the Palestinians and the Afro-Americans in this country? Shannon, do me a favor and ask yourself and Joyce Beatty this question for me. Have you forsaken your humanity? To all of you, I ask you, have you lost touch with that inner child that dreamt of equality, justice, and a world free from tyranny of senseless killing and oppression? Or have you forsaken your humanity? We stand at a pivotal moment in this history where the future is looking back and judging our actions. Your children, your grandchildren, and their families are all watching right now, curious to know which side of history you stood on. So I ask you one last time, have you forsaken your humanity? Or will you ceasefire, acknowledge the genocide by Israel, and sever all ties with this oppressive regime? This is a question that we would like to have an answer for.
Thank you, Hani, for centering this on the personal part of this. Last time we were here, I said incorrectly that this was an international issue, not a local issue. I was wrong. I said I was wrong then, and through conversations, I realized how wrong I was, not just because of just me misspeaking, but because over the last few weeks, we also have been educated about just the rampant Islamophobia that's happening in this community on the campus of OSU. That is my responsibility and my safety. The questions that you asked me about my personal introspective nature, those are the questions that I ask myself every day in doing this job. I have to lead this city today and think about how I can bring people together tomorrow. That's what I am trying to do, is always to be that bridge to bring this community together. Folks who are feeling Islamophobia, folks who are feeling antisemitism, and folks who don't know anything about this but are trying just to be empathetic, that is my job, and that's where I want to be when history writes the story of what happened today and what will happen tomorrow. I will create this space, and let me just say this, I know that the only reason that I'm able to be in this seat as an openly gay, black council president is because of folks who made it uncomfortable for other people many years ago. And so that's why I try to use this space to make sure that all voices have the space to amplify, to move conversations forward. So I'll continue to be introspective about what I can do more, but I also, you know, and that's not something that is answered behind a dais, that is answered for me by actions and the way that I live. And so that might not be sufficient for this space right now, but it is the truest thing that I can say.
Thank you for your acknowledgement, and thank you for everything that you just said, but I still have the question of, will you sign on to the ceasefire as a whole council, not just Padia and Favor? I would like an answer on the record, please.
Well, sorry, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I think that we would like the opportunity to read and discuss. I mean, it was put out very recently. Let's, I don't think that I would be saying yes right now in the open meeting. I think that what I believe and what I would probably ask the council members if they don't mind reading or stating the statement so that folks can know what they said, but I would like the opportunity to go back and see if there is something that I may need to add to that statement.
I think that's shameful that you can't say yes right now. I'm sorry.
So before you speak, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla and I did not issue that statement to convict our colleagues that we have the honor of serving with every single day. She and I issued that statement because it is what we wholeheartedly believe in and what we support. And so I think it is unfair to judge anyone who is not at this moment willing to sign on to a statement that she and I crafted together. What I will also say, and I said this in the meeting that we had with you last Tuesday, is that when this city was under duress in 2020, which started off with the murder of George Floyd, and then we had the killing of Casey Goodson Jr. and Andre Hill in Columbus, Ohio, I made a statement. And I didn't look for other colleagues to sign on to said statement with me or for a resolution for that matter. And so I say that only because I do want to center the notion that we are treating any group of people any differently than what we have done in the past. And so I will continue to say that I see you, I hear you. I know my colleague sees you and hears you as well, and I have no problem with reading the statement out loud, but I do think that we are now bordering- But I do think that we are now bordering a disrespectful space and pressuring people to get to a place that they're not there yet. And while we respectfully appreciate everyone's ability to protest and speak outright, I hope that what Councilmember Barosa de Padilla and I have written carefully provides you... I'm speaking specifically to you because we had this meeting and this conversation with what you need to move to other elected leaders in this city, and this county, and this state, and at the federal level, and for us to not get distracted with trying to convince just this body to sign on to one statement.
Respectfully, ma'am, if I can say so. You told me this in our meeting on Tuesday as well, and I don't think I was able to completely voice the fact that just because it wasn't right then doesn't mean it's not right now. I think when you say we're teetering the line of being disrespectful or potentially being disrespectful in regards to pressuring members of this council to sign on to a statement, I struggle and I stutter to find what's disrespectful about begging for humanity. I think that's the disconnect.
And I absolutely hear you. I absolutely hear you. But what I think, if we just ran back the interaction that just happened between the young student and council president, that's where I think that you tend to lose folks in the fight. And I don't want you to lose folks in the fight at all. Because what this group, what this community, and what the Palestinian people are fighting for and what we stand with you on should not get mixed in with semantics and words. That's what I'm just trying to make sure that we stay focused on because I want to keep the focus on the Palestinian people that need help right now and supporting this community who needs support right now.
I actually believe... Would you like to speak? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, and the point that I was making to the gentleman is that for us to really put out a council statement, we would do that together. And that's not something that is done right here, right now, in front of folks. It would mean that we would need to engage with each of the council members, get their appropriate feedback, and that's just not... And really read and understand and, you know, and engage and not necessarily change the spirit in which Councilmember Barosa de Padilla and Councilmember Favor addressed their statement. So that's all I was saying. It was not a rejection, and I wasn't offended by the ask. But I appreciate Councilmember Favor's leadership on this.
And I will also add, because you... This is also the reason why Councilmember Barosa and I, De Padilla and I, made the statement today, because time is of the essence.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, government does move incredibly slow. And so she and I were ready to move, and we had to respect the timing of our colleagues as well. I just don't want it to appear as though my colleagues are not supportive as well.
I appreciate that. I think it actually helped that they were able to get out.
Honestly, I'd like to echo everybody's sentiments. But to continue with what I prepared: Being a product of my traditional Palestinian parents, I am frequently concerned with how I speak to the adults in my life. I consistently tread lightly because I fear taking up too much space in a room or how much power I have in a space with professionals. Yesterday, I turned 22, and 21 will forever be edged in my brain as the first time I mourned. 21 will mark my disillusionment with the world and my transition to adulthood. I've never lost anybody before, and now I've lost 12,000 members of my family because one thing nobody outside the Palestinian diaspora can understand is how we feel the prick in hurt of our fallen like picking the cactus fruit of northern Palestine. I spent the last month of 21 meeting with, pleading with, all but gravelling with the members of my community, from my admin to my representatives, who are meant to protect me and my peers. I left class, I sat with you, and I asked for less than we deserve as members of this community for the sole purpose that I feared asking for too much. I feared being seen as the utopian, idealist 21-year-old girl who doesn't understand the inner workings of politics and law, even though that's what she studies. I felt victim to what Palestinians have been forced to do for almost a century, which is negate their needs and negotiate for what they are truthfully owed because for some reason, our identity is negotiable. The most ridiculous part is that even after negotiating, even after asking for less than even international law requires, even after watering down what is required of this council by the very nature of its existence, our asks were not met by all. Councilwoman Lordess and Favors, I want to genuinely thank you from the bottom of my heart, al fondo de mi corazón, for the statement that you crafted an hour ago. However, even after this victory, which trust me will not be overlooked by the Palestinians in this community, we still have a long way to ensure the safety of the citizens of Gaza and the citizens of our community. Councilwoman Bangston, the first thing out of my mouth to you was how I felt unsafe as a student on campus. Clearly, nodding your head meant you had other things on your mind than the massacre of an entire ethnicity and the residual effects it has on the community you are meant to serve. President Harding, you told me you would meet with OSU admin, but if President Peter's statement is the best you and admin can do, a statement that doesn't even say the word Palestinian, a statement that is erasing us off the map alongside Israeli settlements, then clearly, you missed the urgency in the canons of my voice that is hoarse for yelling for my rights as an American because Allah only knows I'm not going to get them as a Palestinian. All of you all but guaranteed us a statement, and while two of you found the humanity to adhere to said guarantee, I'm not looking for the rest of you to infiltrate my inbox with pleasantries and prolonged promises. Excuse me when I say I am tired of waiting. This last month hasn't aged me to 22. It has created a distinct line between myself and my non-Palestinian peers that supersedes age and experience. What is worse is while I say this has aged me, as an outsider, as somebody who has the luxury and simultaneously the guilt of going to bed without cascades of bombs on me, imagine the trauma of the children of Gaza who are setting up press conferences begging the world to hear them. It is them along as us that you are not protecting by not calling for a ceasefire, recognizing the genocide committed by Israel and cutting ties with Israel. I turned 22 yesterday, which is now four years older than the average age of somebody living in Gaza, with over 5,000 children brutally murdered in the last month, not to mention the thousands of our men that we are consistently dehumanizing by not acknowledging for fear that they are seen as nothing more than terrorists. I am no longer willing to tread lightly, and I am no longer fear-taking of space because first and foremost, this space is mine as a voting member of this community. First and foremost, I am no longer willing to water down the plight of Gaza for your convenience and negotiate my identity because Palestinians are at risk of having nothing left to negotiate. I am done pretending we aren't on equal footing because the reality is, respectfully, you serve me in my community, not the other way around. And we are here as Palestinians, as Muslims, as allies to no longer ask for, but demand you sign on to a statement for ceasefire, recognizing the genocide Israel has committed and cutting ties with Israel. I would likewise ask that this not take another month because the reality is the people of Gaza don't have another month. The reality is the safety of your community is not ensured for another month. But the reality is, City Council, you are going up against a community whose resistance and resilience has spanned 75 years and counting. So whether or not it takes another month, we will be here, we will come into our living room, we will be here because they can't be here, and we will continue with our demands, the demands of Gaza, the demands of basic humanity. After everybody was finished today, you asked them a question, but today I end with the question: Are you willing, today, right now, to sign on to a statement calling for ceasefire?
Thank you. I think I addressed that right before you spoke. It's not that I will not, especially with the statement that I read right before council that my colleagues said, but for us to do something jointly, it won't happen during this meeting. That's all.
You, President Harding, President Shannon Harding, are you willing to sign on to a ceasefire?
I need to see a statement that I can... that I need to put my finger in.
Are you willing to call for ceasefire? There doesn't need to be semantics, there doesn't need to be anything else. Are you willing to call for a ceasefire?
That's the thing, I'm not going to do it right now.
Why? Why?
I know. I want a ceasefire. Just literally say it, Shannon. Just literally say it. I agree with a ceasefire. Say that.
I was at the last meeting. So you're telling me from the last meeting to now, you have... None of you did any education on what's happening.
We're not supposed to have signs in council chamber.
Just say I want one house.
37 days, you don't stand a chance. Will you sign a ceasefire after what you've been witnessing? After 37 days?
The children of Gaza don't have this time.
They don't.
How many kids have to die? People are starving.
Every 10 minutes, a child in Gaza dies. While we have been sitting here in this chamber for about... What time is it?
Over an hour.
Over an hour. Six to 10 children have died. How many more children will it take? Two of your council members have found the humanity to call for a ceasefire. What is wrong with the other seven of you? Call for a ceasefire and genocide. What is controversial about not wanting children to die? Address that. Answer his question. What's the difficulty? What is the hesitancy? Why are you hesitant to call for a ceasefire? Let us know.
We have a...
Every time the government lies, another child in Gaza dies. Every time the government lies, another child in Gaza dies. What is controversial about calling for a ceasefire? I want you to look me in the eye as a Palestinian, as a member of this community, and tell me, President Harding, what is controversial? What is your hesitancy to call for a ceasefire?
Do you care about your political career this much? Come on, man, it's a shame. Have you forsaken your humanity?
You are a parent, President Harding. You are a parent. I plead with you as a parent. There's 5,000 children in Gaza that have been killed in the last month. You have a little boy. Imagine your little boy. Where is your humanity? What is controversial about this? What am I saying that is so idealistic?
It's not controversial. But what I need you to understand, I am City Council president.
I'm not saying to say it on behalf of all City Councils. I'm saying it as Shannon Harding.
And I understand that. I understand that. But what I am saying is that this is not how I, as my job, has to engage. I need to be able to...
Two of your colleagues did it. Two of your colleagues came out today and said ceasefire. The precedent has been laid on your own council. You can do it. You are not doing it because you don't want to do it. What is the hesitancy?
I appreciate that. And like I said, I am not opposed to, you know, looking at and getting...
Say it!
I'm not... I mean, that is what I'm not going to do. I'm not going to be forced... Because regardless of if I believe or not... And it is 6:28. We do have to have our zoning hearing. All right. We will reconvene our zoning committee.
Every time the government lies, another child in Gaza dies. Every time the government lies, another child in Gaza dies.
67 will now come to order. Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Meeting is convened. Let me find my talking points. Can I get a motion to suspend with the reading of the Journal?
Submoved.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Dorance chairs that committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember Flores yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight, zoning and general, allow me briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We only hear staff presentation for ordinances that have a disapproval from recommending body or if you have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. Tonight, we did not have any public speakers slips this evening. I have to report all ordinances on our agenda have approvals from all recommending bodies. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear in city staff. Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear the firm, the testimony you're about to give, shall be the truth and nothing but the truth as you shall answer in a painful penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record reflect that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Billion Zoning Services has been sworn in. First, we have ordinance 2967-2023 to rezone 2400 Old Dublin Road, being 12.32 plus acres located on the north side and south sides of Old Dublin Road, 760 plus feet north of Dublin Road, from AR3 apartment residential district and LM apartment AR12 of limited apartment residential district. Once again, the applicant has requested to postpone this ordinance, so unless my colleagues have any questions or comments, I move to postpone this ordinance to November 20th, 2023.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have movement of the council variances. First, we have ordinance 3008-2023, granted variance provisions of section 3332.035, R3 residential district, 3312.35B prohibited parking, 332.05 area district lot width requirements, 3332.13R3 area district lot requirements, and 3332.19 fronting the Columbus City Code, so property located at 2877 Cleveland Avenue to allow a non-accessory parking garage, reduce development standard in the R3 residential district. The request variance will allow a non-accessory parking garage with the capacity to securely park four transit vans utilized by local nonprofit organizations. Variances to prohibit parking lot width, lot area, and fronting are included in this request. The proposal has approvals from city staff and the North Linden Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff, the findings of council.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance 3064-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3356.3C for permitted uses, and 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required of the Columbus City Code, so property located at 794-796 of Oakwood Avenue to allow three-unit dwelling, reduce development, reduce parking in the C4 commercial district. The requested variance will allow the existing building to be converted into a three-unit dwelling. The council variance is required because the C4 district only allows dwelling units above specified commercial uses, but does not allow dwelling units on ground floor of a building. A variance to reduce required parking from six to four spaces is also included in this request. The proposal has approvals from city staff and South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff, the findings of council.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. I next move to amend to emergency.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 3071-2023 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.037, R2F residential district, 3312.13 driveway, 3312.27 parking setback line, 3312.49 minimum number of parking spaces required, 3332.05A4 area district lot width requirements, 3332.14R2F area district requirements, 3332.18D basis of computing area, 3332.25 minimum side yards required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard, the Columbus City Code, so property located at 473 East Beck Street, to allow two-unit dwelling on one lot with reduced development standards in the R2F residential district. The request council variance will allow two-unit dwelling on one lot. The request also includes variances to driveway width, parking setback, number of parking spaces, lot width, area district requirements, lot coverage, maximum side yard, and rear yard requirements. Proposal has approvals from city staff and the South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff, the findings of council.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Pass.
And finally, we have ordinance 2968-2023, granted variance provisions of section 3333.025, AR2 apartment residential district uses, 3312.49C minimum number of parking spaces required, 3312.21B3 landscaping and screening, 333.16 fronting, and 3333.255 perimeter yard of the Columbus City Code, so property located at 2400 Old Dublin Road to allow vehicular access and non-accessory parking, reduce development standards in the AR2 apartment residential district, and repeal ordinance number 1943-2022 as applicable in subarea F, passed July 25th, 2022. This is a companion variance to the rezoning postponed earlier on our agenda tonight, and again, at the request of the applicant, I move to request to postpone to our next zoning committee on November 20th, 2023.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Postpone.
Thank you, Council Presidents. All we have in tonight's zoning agenda.
Seeing no further business coming for council, is there most to adjourn?
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, remit present Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have...